Oh, I saw it upstairs. That's where I saw it. It's not in the kitchen.
We'll go to work, call the meeting to order. First item is invocation, Rabbi Dr. Adele Potkin. And then after that, Gabriella will lead us in the pledge.
Honorable Mayor Skug, council members and staff, community members and friends. Once again, this august body is embarking upon the path of the challenging tasks of governing. Guiding the growth and health of our community appears to be foremost on your minds as you declare May 10th through 16th to be honored as Hospital Week. You have encouraged and you lead all to appreciate those who work hard at making the hospitals function as best as possible. Yet is appreciation enough? Therein lies the challenge of the governing. For all those aspects of our lives that we care deeply about, how best can we move these causes forward for the benefit of all? Children, adults, animals, environment, and so on. Hence, it is incumbent upon us to pray that you, our leaders, may be guided now with clear vision, wisdom, and strength. May you not shirk from making hard decisions when needed to do so so that our community can be safe and secure with the needs of all its people being well provided for. May you be blessed with the ability to find common grounds tempered by compassion to make rational leadership decisions for all. In affirmation of these fervent prayers, let each of us now, in his or her own way, agree, as we say, "So may it be."
So may it be.
Thank you, Rabbi. Adele? Or Gabriella, I should say.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Gabriella. Okay, next item is roll call. Mandy?
Mayor Skug?
Present.
Vice Mayor Nye is absent this evening. Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Mallory?
Here.
Councilmember Marshall?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman?
I'm here too.
We have a quorum, I take it?
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to scheduled announcements and presentations. Prescott Valley Police Department, introduction of Officer Brandon Frost. Chief Fittelstein.
Mayor and council, thank you for this opportunity to introduce you and our community to our newest police officer, Brandon Frost. Brandon was born and raised in Arizona, having spent a short amount of time in Colorado as a child. Brandon has been a police officer for 11 years. He attended the Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy in 2003, where he obtained his Peace Officer Certification. After that, he went to work for the Chino Valley Police Department, where he held positions as a patrol officer, field training officer, narcotics detective, and police sergeant. Brandon is certified as a drug recognition expert, phlebotomist, general instructor, and firearms instructor, among many other certifications. Officer Frost is married to Nikki, his wife of nine years. They have four beautiful children. 16-year-old Ashley, 11-year-old Kaylee, 5-year-old Kendall, and 4-year-old Carson, also known as Bubba. Officer Frost and his family enjoy outdoor activities together, including competitive shooting, archery, hunting, and fishing. We are truly lucky that Officer Frost chose our agency from the many opportunities he had, and I'm looking forward to watching his career with the Prescott Valley Police Department. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, Chief. Officer, you wish to make comments? You've got 20 minutes.
You didn't want 20 minutes from me. I just wanted to thank everybody for the opportunity in the police department. This town has talked about from as far south as Tucson to the far north as Flagstaff. This place has always, even in hard times, have always moved forward and has always put their best foot forward. I can't wait to be a part of this team. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, Officer. Any of the council have any comments?
Welcome aboard. Thanks, sir.
Officer, welcome and congratulations.
Thank you.
And welcome to your family.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you, and thank you, Chief.
Appreciate it.
Student of the Month, Mr. Whiting. Councilman Whiting?
I always say at this time of the month, this is one of our special meetings, the fourth Thursday of the month. It's because it's Student of the Month for the Prescott Valley Council, Bradshaw Mountain High School, and the Prescott Valley Rotary. And we're here tonight to recognize an outstanding student from Bradshaw Mountain High School. And we're here to make her nervous. Hopefully, we'll meet her parents as well. So we'll be asking her to give a little introduction once we get to that part. But this comes about through a collaboration with those three entities, the Prescott Valley Rotary, the town of Prescott Valley, and Bradshaw Mountain High School. And it's our honor students like Gabriella, Gabriella Fire Robin. And she excels, and you'll hear her story in a lot of different areas, as far as in school, of course, in her community, through different activities and leadership that she pursues, both at school and in her community. And we believe at the Rotary, and I think the town of Prescott Valley is very proud that we have students like Gabriella who exemplify the values that we like to see and engage in school and become a valuable part of our community. I do have some background information, and I know that Gabriella's father was making sure as well that we had all the necessary information. But we did get a wide variety of information, I think, as you started your education, which I think is interesting and gives a lot in terms of perspective relative to who Gabriella is. But she has been schooled all her life in Prescott Valley. And I don't know if we've ever had a student like that, where she's grown up through the various grades through high school. And she is musically inclined, she indicates. She's been a folkloric dancing group participant, a baton twirler. She's been involved with drama groups, concert choir band, and jazz band. And she is sports oriented as well. So she's an all-around student, as well as her academic endeavors. She's been involved with soccer and the volleyball team. And she's been on the student council prior to coming on to Bradshaw Mountain High School. And I'm going to give you just some broad information. And then I think Court Miner, the principal of Bradshaw Mountain High School, will give you a little perspective in terms of her academic achievements at Bradshaw Mountain High School. But she's been invited to the National Youth Leadership Conference, joined Rotary Interact Club, which we appreciate as part of the Rotary Club. She was invited to the high school presidential inaugural conference, honored by, and I hate to say this, the Lions, of all people, at their GPA dinner. I'm going to be fine for that, you know? She believes that her future is in medicine, and she hopes to pursue that and study that at ASU. And again, you know, I would recommend considering University of Arizona. They have a great med school there. And she wants to join the Navy and pursue her medical training in that way as well. And I think that's a great plan, because I think, if anything, I always feel that you need to get grounded somehow. And I think military does that in different ways. So we're really happy that you have a plan for your life and your career. So I'm going to turn it over to Court Miner, and he's going to give us a little perspective about your academic pursuits. Court?
Thank you, Mr. Whiting. Mayor Skug, councilmembers, distinguished guests. My name is Court Miner. I'm the proud principal of Bradshaw Mountain High School. And I'm here today to talk about Ms. Gabriella Fire Robin. Just real quickly, so you guys know, our students, I would love to tell you that I handpicked them, but they're actually nominated by our teachers. And I'll kind of get more into that in a minute. But that's the impression that she's made on our campus for our teachers. If you take a look at her, you'll see she's kind of quiet, except for some of her classes. But she is a leader by example. You have a lot of people that can be verbose and loud and kind of lead at the front of the mic. Sometimes people would say that about me. But Gabriella, as you heard from Mr. Whiting, she's very well-rounded, from sports to academics to volunteering in the community. And she's a leader by example. This year, next week is our 4.0 dinner. And we have 29 students on our campus that'll be recognized at that dinner. And Gabriella is one of those students. She is a captain of our color guard. I think that started off with her baton twirling. And when she got to the high school, and if you guys have ever been out to a marching band and you see the girls out with the big flags, that's what Gabriella is involved with, in the captain. She's involved with Girls State, as Mike was saying, the high school presidential inaugural conference. She's involved in our Interact Club. And she's going to pursue medicine at ASU. Her GPA obviously is over 4.0, if she's going to the 4.0 dinner. But more impressively, she's in the top 10% of her class. And a lot of times, you know, in high school, the louder students sometimes can kind of overshadow. And so I really appreciate the fact of my teachers recognizing the leadership qualities, and especially her growth over the last four years at Bradshaw, and how she's stepped up in these leadership positions. And like I said, she's in the top 10% of our class of 367 seniors. A pretty tough group, for those of you who've been here through the year and have seen some of the seniors that have been the student of the month. But she's definitely a student on our campus that leads by example. Gabriella Fire Robin.
Hello. Thank you, guys. Thank you. I really don't know what to say. Thank you for everything, and all my teachers, Mom, Dad. I will try. Hi, guys. This is my beautiful mom. She does a newspaper, so if you've ever heard of Alianza, it's a Hispanic newspaper, and I learn a lot from her. And this is my dad, who's a geologist, and I have gotten a lot of wonderful information from him.
Well, I do want to say that you do look like a geologist. I don't know what it is. I just visualize you doing that. But we appreciate, you know, all your hard work. And obviously, your daughter exemplifies the values you hold close to your family and how she's been brought up as a leader in school and our community. So we appreciate that a lot, and you should be very proud. And we wanted to commemorate Gabriella's recognition tonight with a certificate. It just says that we certify the wall that Gabriella has been named the Student of the Month at Bradshaw Mountain High School in collaboration with the town of Prescott Valley and the Prescott Valley Rotary Club. So hang that predominantly somewhere where you see it every day. And we do have a paper weight as well. And this is something that says Student of the Month, Prescott Valley, Arizona. And we hope in your endeavors in medical school, we hope that you'll have this on top of a lot of your medical papers and that you'll consider someday perhaps coming back and working in our community to continue that education and leadership you've had since you've been, what, I guess, a small two-year-old child. So you can carry that on here in the community as an employed person as well. So we'll look forward to that. And I don't know if you have anything you'd like to say. I think the mayor always says you have 20 minutes if you'd like to say something.
Bill or Rosanna, go ahead.
Yes, I want to...
Pull the microphone down a little. There you go.
Yeah, I want to say thank you to everybody for this recognition to my daughter. That's it. Thank you.
Bill, any comments?
Yeah, I just also want to thank you folks. I think every parent raising a child has its ups and downs. And it's nice when you get a recognition like this, you realize that all the ups and downs have really been worthwhile. So thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Gabriella.
Gabriella, congratulations. And Bill and Rosanna, I think you deserved congratulations too.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, next one is proclamation, Hospital Week. Frank, can you meet us at the lecturn? And Mandy, I think you have a proclamation to read?
Sure. Yes, we do, Mayor. Hospital Week, May 10th through 16th, 2015. Whereas National Hospital Week is May 10th through 16th, 2015, when individuals all across the country will be celebrating this time-honored event, and the official theme is "Where Miracles Happen Every Day." And whereas a hospital is more than a place where people go to heal, it is a part of the community that fosters health and represents hope. They are central to a healthy and optimistic community from providing treatment and comforting the sick to welcoming new life into the world. And whereas Yabapai Regional Medical Center, YRMC, operates two campuses located in Prescott and Prescott Valley, employs 1,723 individuals who cared for 10,238 inpatients, 66,814 emergency room patients, performed 6,799 mammograms, delivered 1,096 babies, and performed 166 open-heart surgeries in 2014. And whereas YRMC ensures the access of primary and specialty care through YRMC Physician Care with 130 staff members, five nurse practitioners, four physician assistants, and 34 physicians. And whereas YRMC is one of the top three finalists for the National Research Corporation Picker Innovative Best Practice Award as an organization demonstrating best practices which result in significant improvements in patient-centered care and healthcare outcomes. And whereas the compassionate and hard-working people that compose our hospitals deserve universal regard and appreciation for keeping our community healthy. Now therefore, I, Harvey C. Skug, Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, do hereby declare May 10th through May 16th, 2015, to be Hospital Week in Prescott Valley, Arizona, and urge residents to express their appreciation for the people, facilities, and technologies that make trustworthy, reliable, high-quality healthcare possible in our community.
Rick, any comments?
I just want to thank you for all the good work you continue to do. And you do a great job here. Thank you.
I got to say that I'm new to this community, and I think that what the hospital is doing here is outstanding work. And on behalf of the board, YRMC, and the employees, it's with much honor and appreciation that we are acknowledged this way. So thank you very much.
But I will present to you the proclamation. I think this has gone a long way. I remember asking Tim Barnett, when we're going to get a hospital here? He said, "Well, I'm going to get around 14,000 people. That should support an emergency room." Well, 14 came, 17 came, 20,000 came. I says, "Tim, what's the holdup?" Well, he says, "Things have changed." Used to be people would stay in a hospital five days. Mothers give birth to a child, they'd be in five or six days. Now, as he said, it's overnight, maybe two days at the most. Lot of outpatient thing. We finally got the hospital at about 30,000 people. And it's been great ever since. We sure appreciate that.
It's a beautiful facility.
Well, we sure appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Let me see if the council has any comments. Anyone on council?
I wanted to say something. Yeah, I just want to say that long before I showed up to live in Prescott Valley, there were great people thinking of great things for this community. And the hospital has absolutely been a blessing in our life just because of lots of medical issues that we've had. And so I just want to say thank you for being there. I want to thank all the people that I will never know that had the thought and the process going forward to build such an amazing community as Prescott Valley.
Thank you, Mary. Anything else, Rick? Anything else? Frank?
Frank, I think you know that we appreciate having you. We appreciate having the hospital. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, we just, we wanted to say thank you as well. And just wanted to mention, as one of the reasons my family came to Prescott Valley was, of course, the beautiful community. But one of the assets we have is Yabapai Regional East, and that was one of the reasons we came to Prescott Valley. So we appreciate that you're here, and we look forward to bigger and better things in the future as well. Thanks.
Mandy?
Yeah, I just want to say that we're very fortunate to have a quality care hospital such as YRMC here. And this year, I actually got to be one of the statistics for the emergency room. So the care that they took care of me was excellent. And I was fortunate that we have such a great facility here. So tell everybody, keep up the good work and continued great success. Thank you.
Frank, we keep hearing about how good the service is. Keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Council have any comments or communications? Anyone? Larry?
Actually, I do. And that's to just mention two things. Last night, we had our volunteer appreciation dinner at the arena. And we had a great turnout. And just to make the comment that we really do appreciate the volunteers for the town of Prescott Valley. We had over 200 people last night at that dinner. And Heidi Doms Foster did a great job of putting the event on. And once again, just take this opportunity to thank our volunteers for all of their hard work. The second thing is, although Stephen might not want to toot his own horn, I want to put him on the spot to talk about his event that happened Saturday, which really went, came off well.
Steve, any comment about Saturday?
Yeah, go ahead and say a little something. We had the first-ever Prescott Valley Stand-Up for Veterans on Saturday. And I think we served a total of 150 veterans. They all got lunch. Some of them got interviews for jobs and services. And really, none of it could have happened without all the volunteers in this community. So I really do appreciate everyone that helped make that happen and helped get our veterans back to work and back to doing good things for our community.
Good. Thank you, Steve. Anyone else? If there's no further comment, we move on to the all matters listed under consent agenda. These are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, an item that will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. This include the approval of the April 9th, 2015 council meeting and the executive session minutes. Approve a Series 6 interim permit and person transfer, liquor license for the Jackass Flats doing business at Event Center located at 3201 North Main Street. Jeffrey D. Wasserwick's applicant. What you laughing at, Mike? And JA Flats, that's different. Approving a budget transfer at the Police Vehicle Capital and Police Administration Building and remodel capital budget lines to Police Administration Machinery and Equipment Budget Lines. D is approving an agreement with the firm of Heinfield, Meach, and Company, PC to provide audits for the Town and Community Facilities District. E is department reports. F is approving accounts payable. G is monthly financial reports. H is council investment report. Anyone care to pull an item, or do you want to approve them as a whole? Rick?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve all items listed on the consent agenda by electronic vote.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote there, Mandy? And that passes. Thank you, Mandy. We move on then to old business for action. Asking the town clerk to read ordinance number 804 by title only for the second reading. Proposing a zoning map change, ZMC 15-001 Enterprise Parkway. Before we get into it, are there any comments? No, I think we've all studied that. With that, I'd ask the town clerk to read ordinance number 804 by title only. Mandy?
Yes. An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map by changing the zoning classification of approximately 58 acres located south of the Big Sky Industrial Park, approximately one mile east of Mendocino Drive in a portion of Section 20, Township 14 North, range one east of the Gila and Salt River Meridian, Yabapai County, Arizona, from RCU 70 Residential Single Family Rural to M1 PAD Industrial General Limited Planned Area Development Zoning, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Okay, with that, I would ask, shall the ordinance pass? You want to set the vote, Mandy? And that passes. Thank you, Mandy. We move on to number 9B. Asking the town clerk to read ordinance number 805 by title only for second reading. Proposing a zoning map change, ZMC 15-002 for lot 4243, Unit 14. Does there not any questions, comments? Then I would ask town clerk to read ordinance number 805 by title only for the second reading. Mandy?
Yes, sir. An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map by changing the zoning classification of lot 4243, Unit 14, from R2 Residential Multiple Dwelling Units to C2 Commercial General Sales and Services, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
days after its passage and approval according to law.
And with that, shall the ordinance pass? You want to set the vote? Thank you, Mandy. Okay, we'll move on then to number 10. New business for review, comment, and/or possible action. A is consideration of appointing Darlene Packard to the Personnel Board as citizen alternate member. Rick, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do, Mayor. On April 25th, 2015, Darlene Packard's term on the Personnel Board as the citizen alternate member will come due for renewal. She submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Darlene Packard was first appointed to a partial term on this board on October 12th, 2006, as the citizen alternative, alternate member, and this reappointment will be her sixth consecutive term. Vice Mayor Laura Lee Nye and council members Mary Mallory and myself are recommending the reappointment of Darlene Packard for a term with a renewal date of April 25th, 2017.
Any comments, Mary?
No, I would like to have Darlene come up front, though. You know, Darlene is an amazing person in this community. She does a lot for our community. She's always available, and, and I have the great opportunity to work with her in a lot of the events that go on, along with serving on the fireboard. So we thank you very much, Darlene. I'd like to say a few words. You have 20 minutes.
Darlene, I suggest you have 20 minutes, but I know you'll take it, so make a few comments. Just pull it down, that's all.
Well, thank you again for the opportunity to serve this community in the Prescott Valley, and my, my honor to be here. Thank you.
I think it's our good luck to have you, Darlene. But the real test is gonna come in about 30 seconds. We'll see if somebody makes a motion to appoint you.
Okay.
Marty, you're gonna make the motion? Or Rick?
Go ahead. I could. I will motion, I make a motion to reappoint Darlene Packard as the citizen alternate, alternate member to a term with a renewal date of April 25th, 2017 by electronic vote.
Mr. Mayor, I'd second that motion.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Mandy? All right, Darlene, that was unanimous. Are you surprised? Congratulations, Darlene. Thank you so much for your good work. We really appreciate that. Okay, we move on to number B. Consideration of reappointing John Duke to the Personnel Board as citizen board members. John here?
No.
Not here. Any comments, Mary?
No, Mayor, except that he does a great job and is always available to the community. And again, as we talk about our volunteers and the people that are willing to step up and do these things, we do appreciate them, and we look forward to working with them and reappointing John.
Anything to add, Rick?
Yes, I do. This will be John's third consecutive term, and Vice Mayor Laura Lee Nye, Council Member Mallory, and myself are recommending the reappointment of John Duke as a citizen board member to a term with a renewal date of April 25th, 2017.
Okay, any motion, anyone?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to reappoint John Duke as a citizen board member to a term with a renewal date of April 25th, 2017.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to second that motion.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Mandy? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we move on to C. Consideration of reappointing Ryan Judy to the Personnel Board as an exempt employee member. Rick, any comments?
Several, but I'll stick to what's written.
I take it, I take it. That means you don't want to read it.
On April 25th, 2015, Ryan Judy's term on the Personnel Board as an exempt employee member will come due for renewal. He submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Ryan Judy was first appointed to a full term on this board on June 21st, 2007 as an exempt employee member, and his reappoint, and this reappointment will be his fifth consecutive term. Vice Mayor Laura Lee Nye, Council Member Mary Mallory, and myself are recommending the reappointment of Ryan Judy as an exempt board member to a term with a renewal date of April 25th, 2017.
Anything to add to that, Mary? She just said several things. Okay, Mary?
We appreciate Ryan.
Any motions?
No emotions.
Sounds like it's dying for a lack of emotion. Motion, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to reappoint Ryan Judy as exempt employee member to a term with a renewal date of April 25th, 2017.
I'll second.
Okay, would you set the vote, Mandy? And that passes. Okay, we move on to D. Consideration of reappointing Richard Parker to the Personnel Board in, as an exempt alternate employee member. Mary, do you have any comments?
Just that I know that Richard does a great job. I know that Rick has some things that he would like to say over there, and looking forward to reappointing you.
Rick is shaking his head, no.
Richard submitted renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Richard was first appointed to a full term on this board on July 8th, 1999 as the exempt alternate employee member with this, and this reappointment will be his ninth consecutive term. Vice Mayor Laura Lee Nye, Council Member Mary Mallory, and myself are recommending the reappointment of Richard Parker as an exempt alternate employee member to a term with a renewal date of April 25th, 2017.
A motion, anyone?
Okay, I'll make the motion. Motion to reappoint Richard Parker as an exempt alternate employee member to a term with a renewal date of April 25th, 2017 by electronic vote. Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to second the motion.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote? Rick, and Richard, you're gonna make some comments here after we get the vote?
You want to give me a chance? Certainly.
And that passes, Richard.
Mr. Mayor, I thought to make a comment that we're very fortunate as a town to have citizens in our community and staff who volunteer for enormous amount of time, I think. And it just gives us, I think, a benefit in terms of Darlene, six consecutive terms, Richard nine terms. I think it's just something we appreciate, the commitment as well as your expertise and the exposure you have from, from year to year. I think it really benefits the town, so I, I appreciate your, your commitment and your efforts. Thank you.
Well, the good people we get. I've wondered if the community attracts, is attracting good people, or if we're just lucky. Maybe both, huh? Richard, you got any comment?
Yeah, my, my comment was that Ryan Judy's title was exempt employee, should be exemplary employee because he's never gonna miss a meeting, and on that basis, as the alternate, I'm never gonna have to attend another one of those meetings. So for that, I'm grateful to the exemplary employee of Ryan Judy.
Well, we have some exemplary citizens all the way through that volunteer for these positions, and we certainly want to extend our thanks. Any other comments? If no more comment, we'll move on to E. Consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign resolution number 1912, adopting final development plan FDP 15-006 for Prescott Country Club Golf Range Golf Cart, or Cart Garage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You're considering a final development plan, which is the last ministerial step by the council before the staff can issue building permits for this project. This thing came before you several months ago as a zoning map change. The parcel resides immediately adjacent to the Prescott Country Club clubhouse, and the proponent wants to develop a 2,000-square-foot garage that necessitates commercial zoning because he would like to lease out 800 square feet of the garage for golf cart storage. The property was rezoned to a PAD, C2 PAD, so it requires a final development plan. As illustrated on your screen, and for those at home on the screen above, the facility will look like a private residential garage, 2,000 square feet, and will have an attached 200-square-foot patio, covered patio in front. You will be seeing in the near future a reversionary plat, which is necessary to create a separate, separate parcel on which the commercial, commercially zoned but residentially used garage will reside. This matter has been posted and published in the paper, and we've received no, no opposition to date. With that, I'd try to respond to any of your questions or any of the questions from the audience tonight.
Questions, anyone? Eric, no questions? No? No questions, Richard? If there is, then that would mean that we... Anyone cares to make a motion, or a pro motion, or a demotion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Steve?
Motion to authorize the mayor to sign resolution number 1912, adopting final development plan FDP 15-006 for Prescott Country Club Golf Cart Garage by electronic vote.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to second the motion.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Mandy? And that one passes. Richard? Go for it. Okay, we move on. Number F. Consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign resolution number 1913, approving the 2015 Governor's Office of Highway Safety Buckle Up Arizona Enforcement Grant Contract Number 2015-C103-014, and accepting the grant award. Chief?
I'll try not to throw out any more numbers, Mayor. Mayor and council, for your consideration, one number, I'm sorry, is the acceptance of grant monies in the amount of $3,000 to be used in participation in the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety Buckle Up Arizona It's the Law Campaign. Acceptance of these funds has no fiscal impact on the town, and for some very poignant reasons, staff recommends acceptance of the funds. According to the Center for Disease Control, motor vehicle crashes are the leading cause of death among those aged 1 to 54 years in the United States. More than 2.2 million adult drivers and passengers were treated in emergency departments as the result of being injured in motor vehicle crashes in 2012. Adult seatbelt use is the most effective way to save lives and reduce injuries in crashes, yet millions of adults choose not to wear their seatbelts on every trip. According to a recent survey here locally by the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety, our state's rate of seatbelt use has, excuse me, decreased by nearly 10% in the last decade. Our police department will use these funds in collaboration with statewide efforts to increase seatbelt use to increase the safety of our community.
Good. Any questions?
I have, I have a quick question.
Steve?
If, what exactly is a grant going to? Because I know you can't pull somebody over just for a seatbelt violation in Arizona. So is it more for getting the word out that they need to buckle up? Are we gonna pull people over and let them know and just give them off with a warning? Or how, how is this working?
No, we will go out with the intent to find people committing traffic violations, stop them for traffic violations, and then enforce the seatbelt code as a secondary law because, as you referenced, councilman, in the state of Arizona, it's not a primary violation we can stop for.
Cool.
Good. Any other questions, comments, motions?
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Okay, Steve.
Motion to authorize the mayor to sign resolution number 1913, approving the 2015 Governor's Office of Highway Safety Buckle Up Arizona Enforcement Grant Contract Number 2015-CIOT-014, and accepting the grant award by electronic vote.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. You set the vote, Mandy? And that passes. Chief, we appreciate that. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to G. Consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign reservation of funding and funding agreement with Arizona Department of Housing, accepting 300,000 in the Community Development Block Grant Funding for the fiscal year 2014 State Special Fund, Funding Round for the Windsong Drive Improvement. Ryan?
Mayor and council, it's a pleasure to be with you once again. Last fall, you authorized staff to apply for another Community Development Block Grant Application from the Arizona Department of Housing. I'm pleased to announce that last week, we were informed that we were a recipient of that competitive grant again, the full amount that we had requested, up to $300,000. The improvements will go to improve Windsong Drive. We will do a complete build out of the road on the east side and add a sidewalk from Lake Shore toward the existing improvements that are there, south of, south of Lake Shore there. The town will be matching approximately $100,000 to this grant. We did that to increase our odds of getting, getting the funding that matches budgeted in the proposed budget for next year. You can see where the improvements will be on the exhibit. Additionally, there's a lot, that's three or four lots to the south of there where there's no sidewalk. We'll complete that gap as well, so there'll be a continuous sidewalk from Florentine all the way to Lake Shore. That's the existing status now, so we'll be happy to make those improvements if you accept this award.
Any questions, anyone? We have studied this in the past also. Mike?
Yeah, I just had a, it just came to mind, but I, we may have discussed this before because I know we've probably addressed it several times, if not three or more. Will we be moving the fence at all, or is that, it stay in place?
It'll be moved. We have a larger rideaway in that section, so we'll be moving that fence to the, to the east, and we'll be building out the full rideaway with these improvements.
It'll be a nice-sized sidewalk, because I know that's something we've all remarked that, I know I go down that street a lot, and there's a lot of traffic there, and it's a medical kind of corridor, so I think it'll be more than helpful for residents and...
Yeah, there will be, there'll be a five-foot sidewalk, a bike lane, and then we'll also add a turn lane with those improvements as well.
Big improvement. Mary, comment?
No, I'm just very happy to see that this is going to happen. Great job.
Good. Marty?
Yeah, this is a, this is a much-needed project, and I'm glad that we finally got them funding for it. How much disruption to traffic and street do you anticipate? Because like, like Mike said, this is a heavily-traveled street. I know I'm, I'm up and down it four or five times a day, and it's heavily used both from a pedestrian point of view and a vehicle point of view.
You know, they'll, they'll do a saw cut on the existing pavement, and they'll put cones out, so there'll be very little traffic control they'll have to do, traffic which should flow as normal. You know, when they do the overlay of the existing, there'll be some disruption there, but during most of the construction, it'll be seamless. You shouldn't, there shouldn't be much traffic disruption.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions, comments, motions, anyone? Anything else, Ryan?
That's all. We've gotten lucky a few times in a row now with these, so happy to move forward.
Good job, Ryan.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Okay, we're ready.
To approve the reservation of funding and funding agreement with the Arizona Department of Housing and accept $300,000 in Community Development Block Grant Funding from fiscal year 2014 State Special Project Funding Award.
Mayor, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Would you set the vote, Mandy? And that passes. Ryan? Appreciate that. Good job. Okay, we go on to consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not to request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council in the whole and not to any, any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Anyone care to comment? Eric, no? Darlene? Anyone else? Okay, if there's no comments, then we go to the last item, which I know everyone hates. Anyone care to make a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, anyone?
I'll second it, Mayor.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote? And that passes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.